If we could, Madam Clerk, are you ready? If we could call our 4:30 work session meeting to order, please, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Yes, Ms. Cole, Mr. Jones, Mr. Schmidt, Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Wilford.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. John Ruff is going to be here today and just to give us an update, and we appreciate that, John. You've got a lot of projects out there, so I think an update is in order, and thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I thought that it was time to go over a few things because it's been a while since I've been here, except when there was a controversial item or two. But I want to start by thanking you for staying the course because I think our efforts in doing MTL is very important, and I think will probably be more important in the future. I appreciate your confidence in that, and the purpose of today's meeting is to simply update the council and staff and give you the status of our progress. We think it's also important to give you information on the timing of the completion of the other projects that you have given to us to build on. Of the homes that we've built in Waterloo, on the east side of Waterloo alone, we've built now as of today almost eight and a half million dollars worth of homes. And you supported the construction of more homes since that, and on the lots that you approved, we will be building another $6.6 million worth of new homes. And predominantly, those homes will be on the same side of the river, the east side, although there will be about 14 on the west side of the balance. We intended initially to only build in Waterloo and DuWinfield. I didn't really intend to do this many homes. However, the floods and the tornadoes that we experienced in, what, 2006 through '08 to '09 took us in other directions as well, so we built in other areas besides Waterloo. But our goal is to work on Waterloo, primarily Waterloo, because we feel, just like under the old enterprise zone that was established, we need more homes in Waterloo than we need anywhere else. You can go to Cedar Falls and other communities, and the homes are always on green fields and they're spread, and here's where the hurt is the most. We probably have the demographics that will show our new home buyers, which today's statistics say will be in the area of 140,000 to 170,000. We have more people that can realize that piece of the American dream right here in Waterloo than in most other communities. So, having said that, I want to move a little bit to give you an update of what lots that we are presently working on and what's the status of it, because I know that's always on the council's mind, how quickly you're going to get it done, where are you building. So I'll update you as best I can. The infrastructure on Baltimore Field has been put in for all the lots that are available to have infrastructure put in. The back eight units, we're working with planning and engineering to come up with a construction plan to build the continuation of Denver Street and to put in sewer water and storm, and then go down and tie in on Baltimore Field. And we expect that by next week, you should have those construction plans. We've met over the last week and a half, and we will be breaking ground on Baltimore Field as soon as weather permits. On East Third and Lafayette, that was a rather controversial piece, that we didn't quite get the start we wanted, but we started in August. I'm happy to report that all six units are completed, except for, we got caught with the weather, the flatwork and the security fencing. We have a model that has everything done. It's painted, it's got furniture and everything, and we'd like to invite you to come over and see that, because you'll get an idea of what downtown living under new construction will look like and feel like.
John, are there, is there plans to put two more on that?
There is, there is, and it'll crowd that three-story unit that's over there, but in visiting with the people there, there's only four of those 11 units occupied, so I don't know what's going to happen with that. But with the way our garages are positioned and everything, you can hardly see that anymore.
So that's not in the immediate future?
Well, as soon as these are sold, there are two other projects that'll begin along with the regular ranch-style homes, and that's East 7th and two over there. Madison and Monroe, we finished all the infrastructure on those six new lots that we were awarded, and again, there, we're planning on breaking ground again as soon as the weather permits. So 12 on Baltimore, East Third, the finalization of those six, and Madison and Monroe. Now, East 7th and Lafayette, we have a new idea, a new concept. If you've been over driving by the one on East 3rd, you'll see that it was all done with brick and stone. What we're going to do on East 7th is using a little different thing. We're going to use shake siding and actual stone, not the brick, and I think it'll be a new, unique look. Again, it's all marketing, which I will update you on, but all the infrastructure that's needed is in there. All we need to do is run it into the lots on East 7th. So we're done putting infrastructure in, except in two areas, Indiana and Lafayette, which the city has left us main to run sewer, but we'll have to run water, run the main sewer down the street and do the water main, water main sewer and storm. That one's going to be a little more challenging on Indiana, but the roads are there that can be taken up and put back rather easily. We've done all the complicated stuff, like on Vermont and on Madison Monroe, which was all cement streets. Those that we've put infrastructure in will be patched this spring. Newton has one lot. That, the 14 houses that we built over there were all starting out at about 135,000. By the time we finished the project, the appraisals were at 150. So you know it's lifted the neighborhoods, and remember, if you go back, you had all those people concerned about how those houses would fit in with their homes over there, and was it going to be low rent, was it going to be supported ownership, and really, that's all gone away. And those homes fit nicely, they're all occupied by people that are keeping their homes up, and those people are teachers and nurses and families, and some people work at John Deere, you know? It's been good, and it's a mixed neighborhood. We have a great cultural mix there on the old Lincoln site. Tiller Park, we put a lot of infrastructure in that, about $20,000. We don't even have that yet, but we've got the preliminary plats and the exploration of the ground to see that there's no problems building there, and we'll wait to see what happens with that. I know that Community Development had five homes that we started at the old school site, but there's some possibilities there. And I know that the city has other lots. I wish we could get more people interested in MTL, but it's been very difficult. They want to build more expensive homes and bigger homes, and it's easier to make money on the bigger ones, so. Anyway, with the exception of the down payment assistance by Community Development and/or Waterloo Housing that they may have for the buyer in the future, the only incentives now, they're all gone, all the federal incentives are gone, the only thing that is left is the CLURA, which you passed, which I think has been successful, and any incentives that we will provide to the buyer, because we think there still needs to be a little help because of the toughness of some of these banks, and, you know, they're protecting themselves. I understand that, and we've had good luck with these new buyers, but some of these people are, you know, holding the reins pretty tight, so we hope that we'll be able to help in that regard. Effective today, the state has, I think, unless you heard differently, Adrian, the state finalized their new housing tax credits law, and on the agenda tonight is our request to apply for the credits to support the remaining houses. They've done away with the enterprise zone, there's no more enterprise zone committee, there's nothing else that the city will be required to do, but on your behalf, these things have to be applied for with IDEA, and when we do apply for those, we have three years to finish them, which I know has been a concern, how quickly can you get these done? So we will have three years to complete everything that we apply for, and that will protect you. If we do not complete it by that time, we will lose the credits, and much like what happened up there on Burton. So the state's being tough about it, but they're also doing something that's going to protect the need we have in Waterloo, and that is, they're making it very, very difficult for green fields to be used, people going and opening up new grounds somewhere and getting credits. They can get them, but the justification almost is overwhelming. What they're trying to do is focus on the infill lots, and we, I don't know what we have now, Eric, you may have this number in your head, but I think we've got over 300 infill lots in the city, easily, and more is coming on the west side as well, the nearwest side. And I know you're going to have the old Irving School site that people are showing interest in, but there's a lot that can be done to continue. Of all the work that we've done, I'd say about 70% has been done in Waterloo, and all of our work going forward predominantly will be Waterloo as well, because that's where the need is, and I think that's where we're the most successful. The only thing you'll have to do is support the contractor that applies for these credits and show by resolution, which you already have in the bag, the fact that you're giving at least $1,000 per unit to the projects, and you are with your tax credits, the CLURA and the CURA. So you will have no other responsibility except to see that that contractor gets everything done in three years that he applies for, and move on. It's your judgment. But I think you're probably one of the most seasoned councils when it comes to dealing with these matters, because you've had to deal with them frequently.
I like that, seasoned.
Seasoned, yeah. In closing, I'd like to say that I think this is a real opportunity going forward, but there's one hitch. This new law allows every city to apply for these. We were lucky because we had the demographics, the economic indicators that drove this in the past. Now, it's just having the support of a city council. Cedar Falls could do it, but you've got to still build four units, or three if it's multifamily, but you can get those credits if it's an infill lot. Now Cedar Falls doesn't have a lot of infill lots, but they keep coming up, houses get torn down, and they do it. And there are smaller communities that have come to us that said, gee, can we do that in our community? Well, now they can. So I think it's important that we probably focus on what we believe to be the best interest of our city and move forward from there. I guess that's all I have to say, except I really appreciate the opportunity you've given us, and I've been here at some of those meetings where the arrows were flying and stood your ground and made it through, so I appreciate that.
Thanks, John. Counsel, do you have any questions of John about any of these projects at all?
John, what's the average square footage of the homes that you're building?
I can say they, almost always, they're between 1175 and 1300.
And they're all ranches primarily?
No, we've done two stories that were, like, we're not building for Community Development or Waterloo Housing at this moment, but we have at least, I don't know, 12 or 13 houses we did for them, and most of those were ranches and two-story. We've done ranches, we've done capes, we've done two-stores.
Basements too, right?
All with full basements. Yeah, we've never built anything without a full basement.
Didn't you plow them the basements for another bathroom as well?
Well, we do two things. We put in a degress window for a future bedroom, and we put in a bathroom for, under the floor, so they don't have to tear it up.
And how about garages?
All double garages.
Do they all have garages?
That's what everybody expects, really, anymore.
Any other questions?
What do we have in the open house?
Anytime. It's done, it's painted, ready to go. I said the only thing I want is for the oven to be fired up and you smell of baked cookies when you walk in, because then you'll feel at home or something, right?
Well, John, we appreciate what you're doing. I mean, you stepped up and are putting new housing in places that hasn't seen any housing, any new building for a long time, so thanks for what you're doing. Appreciate it. Thanks for the update. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second. We have a motion, a second for the agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We have an agenda. Who'd like to take a few of those items?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Can make a motion and receive and file Mayor Clark's recommendation for the following appointments. Each of them will be for the, well, no, number one, A, B, C, D, and D, all for the Main Street Waterloo Redevelopment Authority, for John Mossey, for John Mossey, Candy Street, John Hayes, all for expiration date of 12/31/2016, for...
Mr. Hart, I think John Hayes is for the 15.
Oh, my gosh.
This is getting confusing.
I'm sorry. John Hayes, 12/31/15, for Andy Abbott, 12/31/17, for Mike Butler, 12/31/15. I move that all those are approved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on those five items. Any questions, comments, concern? Seeing now all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Those five are approved. I'll take the rest.
Certainly. And F, we have Mr. Brad Condon for Boards of Commissions, Board of Adjustments, expiration date 2/20/20. Well, that's a longer one. Richard Jacks, Design Review Board, expiration 2/2/18, and that's a new appointment. Cheryl Newton, Main Street Waterloo Redevelopment Agency, expiration 12/13/2015, that's a reappointment. Steve Sinnett, Main Street Waterloo Redevelopment Authority, expiration 12/31/2017, reappointment. And Shaylan Gersh, Main Street Waterloo Redevelopment, expiration 12/31/2017, that's a reappointment.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second on those five appointments. Any questions, comments?
Yes, sir.
Seeing now all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Those folks are approved.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you.
Services Committee, order. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Wilford.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Ms. Cole. Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the agenda. Any questions or discussion? Hearing now all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, then motion through. We have two requests today. If someone wants to, we can take them both or one at a time, it's up to you.
I would suggest we take them one at a time.
All right.
Move that we approve the request from a city clerk for authorization to begin this civil service process for clerk two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this first request. Is there any discussion?
I just have a quick question. Suzie, could you just give me an idea of what's the difference in job function between a clerk one and a clerk two? Is that a relatively easy definition or not?
There's...
Because this is not an entry-level clerk job, correct?
Right. All of the clerks in my office, except for one right now, are clerk twos, and the one that's not a clerk two moved into my office as a clerk one. Clerk two tend to have a little more than just straight data entry, which is what I think the idea for clerk one is supposed to be. Clerk two, there's a little more decision-making process and more interaction with the public and that sort of stuff. There's not a huge difference between the two.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I noticed on the requisition form, at the top, it's got crossed out to fill a vacancy, and it says to start recruiting, but then down below, Suzie, it talks about it being a replacement position. So isn't that a contradiction or...
Yes, my original request was to start the civil service process and fill a vacancy. However, after our internal personal rec meeting, it was determined that I should just start the civil service process and wait for the budget process to play out, to figure out whether or not to fill that vacancy. So the civil service process takes approximately two months, so we'll be past that, and then I'll bring it back to actually fill the vacancy. So I didn't redo the form, but it is, I am today just asking to start that civil service process, and start the testing and get a list going, but I'm not asking to fill any vacancies yet, and we'll be bringing that back once.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So Suzie, if we approve this, that doesn't fill that position?
It does not. It just allows me to start testing and advertising and all of that to create a list, and those lists are good for two years. So it just gives us a candidate pool essentially when we decide whether or not to fill a vacancy.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, Madam Clerk, need a roll call, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yep.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilford?
Yes. That motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, the second item is a request from the mayor to begin the recruitment process for Information Technology Director and make an appointment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this request. Any discussion or questions in regards to this?
I had questions on this one. From my perspective, it would be prudent to talk to Matt and others about whether we actually want to bring this position in-house or whether we want to outsource this and give us more of a broader service offering for what that position might be able to do, work with more of a hybrid model of outsourced portions of it from a technology standpoint, and then having an onsite person to work through any issues that are here that we already have. Just something to explore.
That's a good question, David, and one that Matt was asked several times when I met with him, first with Ms. Lindeman, with Jane Lindeman, and then when Suzie, Michelle and I met with him, it was asked again along with Mr. Wilford. So if I say something wrong, any of you, please correct me, but we did ask Matt his opinion of that, and he has a very strong opinion that we need our own in-house IT director to manage things that works for us, to direct our activities, but he's also an ardent supporter of us looking out to outsource part of our operations, whether that's the, I don't know the technical term, but he was very, very strong that we need our own IT director that works for us in-house, and then we would then outsource a portion of our operations. Like, anybody, any of those that want to add anything? Michelle, if you'd like to add.
What Matt referred to is that we need, we have to be able to manage the outsourcing contract, because otherwise you get conflicts of interest with them, possibly how they might want to do things. He felt that we need somebody on our staff that works for us, that can help us determine what's best for us, and then, you know, your contract person may or may not have that particular skill, and if they don't have it, they may not recommend that you go get it. So I think that's why you need somebody on staff that understands where we're trying to go, and then you can outsource functions. That is how Matt related, and I realize I'm kind of trying to take words from his mouth, but I think that's what he...
The other portion that this director would do would be to actually help other department heads manage their projects as well. Right now, it's really hard for IT when it's all outsourced, help us know what our needs are technology-wise and create processes and efficiencies with projects that involve IT. So this department head would help us establish that and then outsource our needs, but they would be the one directing it all and hiring the contracts and supervising those contracts. So that is Matt's explanation, that we need somebody in-house to manage the whole thing, the big picture, and then we can outsource the pieces as needed.
Has there been any conversation about maybe taking a look at a technology consultant to take a look at the entire operations of the city? I know Matt has met with different department heads... I know Matt has met with different department heads, but to put in some type of, I'm not opposed to a IT director, because we have to make sure we always have that person that has some accountability to the city, but taking a look at some type of consultant and really take a look at our needs.
Was part of the discussion having anything to do with either the PD or the library, how, you know, we right now have got three part-time, full-time, I'm not sure how you describe them, people involved in it? I know I heard during the PD budget hearing that they've got some unique, maybe, needs or uses or something. I think Wendy is only a part-time IT person anyhow, I think she does other things too, but maybe more specifically about the library, you know, why we have different people.
That has definitely been a topic of discussion before, and Mayor, feel free to interrupt me if you need, but I think kind of that has come up, and what we've all thought is that that is something that needs to be looked at in the future, again, under the direction of a director that oversees, the possibility of overseeing it all and cross utilizing it. Like you said, PD definitely serves several functions. Library, I think he also serves several functions, not just IT, but he also supervises several employees and functions within the library, so that they are definitely being cross utilized in those departments, and by no means would have the capacity to come direct the whole city and do their current jobs. So that has been a topic of discussion, and would definitely be something, once we have a director in place, that we would want to explore and see if there's a way to kind of make it all more efficient, but we need somebody to manage that and take care of it.
I agree, we need someone to manage that, whether it's a consultant that we pay, you know, this is a, this could be a very high-end position, or it could be medium, depending on, as Quentin was talking about, is really kind of what our needs are, based on what our needs are as a city. I don't think they're all that cutting-edge and unique, that would help us and guide what type of position we actually need to help implement this type of, type of work. You know, as I said, it's not all that cutting-edge, we probably need somebody that's knowledgeable and hands-on on implementing some of these out-of-the-box technologies.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Susie, is this like your position? Are we just starting the process, or is this to hire this?
This is not a civil service position, this is a department head position, so it's not civil service, so this would be to actually recruit and hire, is what this request is for.
Then I have a budget question. Would, are we kind of taking what we're paying, Michelle, are we, whatever we're paying the schools, one hundred and ninety, whatever, and just, for budget purposes, how do we, we're already paying some money, and we're just putting it towards us, is that what we know?
At least part of it, that's how we're going to have to get started. We would like that person to help us determine what else we need. That's, this is going to be difficult as we go into the next budget year, but we, I tried to ask that question of Matt, and he just really wants us to hire our own person before we even can answer that, so...
But we're not going to get anybody on board before the budget is done, are we?
No. No, we're going to have to kind of take a leap of faith here for next year.
Do you have a range, is there a salary range on this?
Yeah, it's on, I think it's on your attachment.
Okay.
We stayed at approximately ninety thousand.
We're covered from last year, the end of June.
Eighty-five to a hundred, we did check all the other cities, and that's where they fall.
Under our current agreement with the schools, correct? Steve, let me, oh, I'm sorry, let me answer that if you don't mind.
No. Yes, we are. But in discussions with Matt and with Jane Lindeman, it's, it's acutely obvious that they are anxious for us to move forward with this. If we don't, do we have a contract till then? Yes, unless there's a sixty-day-out clause, that could be exercised by either party. Whether or not the school system would choose to exercise that, I don't know. I don't think that they would leave us in the lurch, that they have made it relatively clear that they're anxious for this transition to go forward.
Gotcha.
Matt is, I wouldn't say he's overwhelmed, because I think that's the wrong word, but he's finding it difficult to do either entity a full service.
From my perspective, I personally like another, you know, week to at least talk to him personally, since this is something I've got some subject matter knowledge of, and can we bring it back next week? Would that work at all?
You can make a motion to table.
Well, if there's anybody interested else in doing that, if there isn't, I wouldn't, I see some interest in that, so I would make a motion to table this request for one week for the mayor to begin the recruitment process for Information Technology Director.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion with this?
Did we do that right, or do we have to dispose of the first one?
No, you're okay.
Hearing now all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign. Motion to adjourn. Take them for one week.
I might, if I may, Chair, Mr. Chair, make a request that, how do you want this contact to be arranged? Will you, David, take it upon yourself to contact Matt and visit him?
Yeah, I'll reach out to him.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Are we meeting with Matt this week in budget?
I don't know. We may be.
I know, he's gone, I think until at least Thursday. We did have him scheduled for Thursday, but I don't know if that got rearranged.
I think he's just gone through, through Wednesday, so I thought he was going to be available Thursday and Friday this week. That's why he's not here tonight, to explain his story right now.
And I can, I can see how it ties into the conversation, but I think the conversation you want to have is a little bit more holistic, so...
Yeah, it's not about just money.
Any other discussion?
I think we have a motion to adjourn, second.
Aye.
I made the motion, he needed a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on adjournment, all in favor, say aye. I oppose, same sign, that motion passes. Thank you.
Amount not to exceed $11,240.
We have a motion. I'll second those items. On those four items, any questions, comment, discussion?
Lieutenant Fangman?
Yes, sir.
Can we talk about the Police Staff and Command School?
Dan Trolle, the Director of Safety Services, we're gonna pay for this using forfeiture funds, money we took from drug dealers and people engaging in illegal activity. And this is a school, it competes with the FBI Academy for training officers. I've attended the FBI Academy, I've experienced some of these courses. I feel that we're getting a better product with this training. This allows the officer to get home on a regular basis. I forget what the increments are, but I think he's there for two weeks, then comes back for two weeks. Maybe Michelle would remember, but...
I think that's what they said.
Yeah, I think that's the... We promoted three lieutenants last year, three sergeants and one captain. I need to prepare my captains, my lieutenants, and my sergeants for the future. This is good training, progressive thinking. We get a good product from this.
Okay, thank you.
Dan, is this at the community college, do you know? Is that why it's in Marshantown? Why is it Marshantown?
They're sponsoring it.
Marshantown PD?
Yeah. And I hope we can sponsor one ourself in the future.
And I would ask that we need to specifically ask for approval to waive our current travel policy to allow the hotel meals for this one. Because Marshantown is more, is less than 125 miles away. And there's a memo in there to that effect.
So how do we...
Do you want to just amend your...
Say your waiver.
amend your motion to also include a waiver, too?
Okay, so I'll amend my motion to also include a waiver to the travel policy since Marshantown is less than 125 miles away.
Second. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Sure.
Michelle, how do we approve, how do we approve this when it's next year's budget we're running into? Part of this is this year's budget, part of it's a next year's budget, not even certified next year's budget.
It's all next year's budget.
That's a very good question. I believe they are planning to pay the registration out of this year's budget, but I thought it would be better to inform you of the full cost of the full trip rather than just bring the registration this year and then come back, you know, in August for the hotel and meals, so...
I'm right, we're into 16.
You're correct that we are going, well, 16.
16.
The fiscal 16 budget, we are, they are requesting that you approve it for both, which, yeah, we, we just don't ever do that, but we are being asked to do it in this instance. And again, this is forfeiture money, so it's not, it's really not coming out of the property tax funded budget that we're working on. It's funded with restricted funds for the police department, so it's not as big as a budget issue as it would be if it were being, coming out of the property tax budget.
Michelle, can you tell us what the, what the fund balance is of that fund? For some reason, I thought that thing was getting kind of depleted, but apparently not.
No, I, it's, it was about $82,000 when I looked for this particular one, and that's just what's been transferred to Waterloo PD. There's typically more somewhere down the pipeline that we don't have yet.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, we've got a motion, a second amended, motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same signs, those items approved.
And some preauthorizations.
Yes, sir.
Central garage, $3,538.09 for repair parts for backhoe front axle. Engineering, $8,156 to fabricate, fabricate and install two pipe and match extensions including skirt covers. Fabricate one, five by six wave finding sign. And planning and zoning, engineering, and CD, CD, sorry, thank you. Community development, $2,466.95 for ARC GIS software maintenance agreement. Police, $3,733.38 to repair squad car damaged in traffic accident. And Public Works, $2,260. That's a request for service software annual maintenance. Sewer, $6,786 for dessert, six inch plug valves, two each, lagoon number two, gas drip pit replacement valves.
And I'll second those items. Any questions, comments?
Question on the repair for the squad car?
Yes, sir.
So that, we don't have insurance for that one, or is this our copayment? And was this our fault, or was this somebody else?
It was that deer. Suicide.
Did he have a...
We were self insured.
Gotcha. Didn't you just have a course on your...
Yes, on suicide.
Right.
Any other questions, comments? Sign up. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, those items approved. We also have one, two, three, four line items to be amended that are on display in the Sheriff's office. Also want to move to pay the bills this evening. And this week there are $777,215.16, so that's 777, comma 215.16.
Second.
So a motion and a second to pay the bills. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Bills will be paid.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterloo City Council on February 2nd, 2015. I have a few folks, hearty souls in the audience tonight that are here with us, so welcome to you guys and welcome to all of those that might be watching on our public access television channel. Madam Clerk, if you would start us by reading the roll, please.
Yes, Ms. Cole, Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
If you would all join me, please, in standing for just a moment of silent reflection. A prayer, please. Thank you very much. And if you would join me in the pledge of allegiance tonight, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May be seated.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
Move that we approve the agenda as proposed and also the minutes of January 26 regular session.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding the agenda or the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we recede, place on file, and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B4, also with the approval of the consent, move that we make our bills payment, which we read by our finance vice chair.
Our bills payment this week are $777,215.16, that's 777, comma 215.16.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I just had a quick question on item number A2, the spec for the parking services. And I just had a quick question, too, so I don't know if we want to ask that now, or we should make it a separate item. I don't...
Well, let me find it. A2.
A2. For parking.
Right. Would you like to, I don't think, I don't believe we need to make it a separate item, but Ms. Sheriff, if you'd like to answer that.
Not unless you're requesting it.
No, I just, the question I guess I had is, the, the items that we have in that specification, are those all services that we are providing or fulfilling today? Or are we, are we requesting some things that we don't even do?
I think we're requesting maybe a different level of service than what we have right now, but we provide all of those services at some level.
Okay. And then also, are we, is that thing set up so that if somebody wants to bid on it, is it, is like an all or none thing, or could they bid part of it, or certain levels up to?
They certainly could within their capabilities bid as much of it as they could do, as long as they're very explicit as to what they do. Obviously, we're gonna look, try to look at a comprehensive package, maybe cut some things out depending on cost, or maybe cut it all out depending on what you guys want to do, but we certainly meant that to give us options, is what we're looking at.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions regarding the consent agenda, counsel? It's a roll call, vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good, that motion carries. And I do want to recognize some folks, we have actually several appointments tonight to our boards and commissions. We have some new members, and I believe some of the, the new members are here. And I'm gonna go through those first. Candy Street, I don't believe is here, but Candy is a new appointment to the Main Street Waterloo Redevelopment Authority. John Molsed is a new appointment to the Waterloo Redevelopment Authority. Andy Abbott is a new appointment to the Waterloo, to the Main Street Waterloo Development Authority. Andy, are you here? There's a couple gentlemen here that I don't recognize, so I'm sorry about that. Let me see, Richard Jax is a new appointment to the Design Review Board. Richard, why don't you just stand up, would you please, Richard, for just, just a second? And Brad Condon, I believe. Brad, why don't you stand up? Brad is a new appointment to our Board of Adjustment. So, gentlemen, both of those are, are pretty, pretty important boards, and, and we appreciate your offer to give of your time and your talents to serve on those boards. There are important decisions that you will be making. Sometimes we'll all, always necessary make a lot of friends on those, and sometimes you'll make a lot of friends, but it's, our boards and commissions and the volunteers that serve on those are incredibly important to the city. So, thank you both for stepping up and giving, again, of your time and your talents to be on those. I think you'll enjoy the process and, and learn some stuff about city government as you're at it. So, thank you both very much. Appreciate it. I will tell you both that we have a relatively short agenda tonight, so you're welcome to stay and watch our agenda and get a little bit of the civics lesson if you'd like. If you don't want to do that, you're free to leave at any time, and you're not going to offend anyone. So, thank you, gentlemen. Item number two, ladies and gentlemen, tonight on the agenda is a public hearing that we are not going to have. It was in Animal Control Services for the City of Waterloo. We sent out RFPs, there were no bids received, so we're kind of regrouping and figuring out what we're gonna do next on that, but at this point, we're not gonna have the hearing because we didn't have any bids. So, we're gonna go right on to resolutions.
Can I ask one question?
You may.
We talked about it a little committee, David and I, are we still gonna pursue that?
Sure. I'm not sure that it was a committee, Mr. Lynn, but absolutely, as we move forward, and as I have said many times in this process, what I, what I want to do is get input and ownership from council, and yes, as we move forward, you guys will be involved. All right? Mr. Mayor, resolutions, please, first three, three, four, and five.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
Move to adopt a resolution approving award of contract to Municipal Pipe Tool Company LLC of Hudson, Iowa for the sanitary sewer improvements for FY 2015. Phase two CIP pipelining project, contract number 876, in the amount of $1,471,353.90. And four, move to adopt a resolution approving Convention and Visitors Bureau recommendations for funding of hotel motel mini grant applications for the Waterloo Community Playhouse Blackhawk Children's Theater in the amount of $2,430. And for the Faith Basketball Academy Mid-American Youth Basketball Tournament in the amount of $2,011. Number five, I move to adopt a resolution approving agreement with Iowa Department of Transportation for the use of city streets to detour Highway 218 traffic using Iowa 21 to East San Martin Drive to I-380-218 from mid-August to mid-September 2015, in conjunction with the Highway 218 resurfacing project from north of Marigold Drive to I-380. An authorized mayor to execute said document.
Thank you, counsel. Hart, but, counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding three, four, five?
Mr. Mayor, just have a quick question on number five. Mid-August to mid-September is around the beginning of school at Hawkeye. I'm wondering if this is going to have any impact on the traffic coming in from the school on 21, or does this not have?
Eric, I don't know, but I can speak to that. Can you, please?
Eric, actually, this is taking some of the 20, Highway 20 traffic off at 21 so that they can make it around. There's a ramp that's gonna be closed. It's primarily gonna be happening at night.
Okay.
We're not gonna do it under real heavy traffic situations, so most of the work will be done at night.
Okay.
So that's when you'll see the increase in traffic on our streets.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please, it's a roll call, vote.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. If we could take six, seven, and eight, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving spill prevention control and countermeasure plan development agreement for Public Works Campus Facilities in the amount not to exceed $3,500. An authorized mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Number seven, a resolution approving housing enterprise zone program agreement, number 14-HEZ-180 with Iowa Department of Economic Development and JSA Development LLC for the rehabilitation of eight housing units located at 320 to 322 East Forest Street within enterprise zone boundaries. An authorized mayor to execute said document. And number eight, a resolution approving request by Otto and Kim Macklin of Anacapa Associates LLC to cancel development agreement and rescind resolution number 2014-919 for the sale of 506 Reed Street.
Second. Madam Counsel, do you have any questions regarding any of those three?
Mr. Mayor, number eight.
Yes, sir.
As if we cancel that agreement, what will become of that particular property? Will be, will we be looking for someone else to take that one over, or are we gonna demolish it?
We're moving forward with demolition on that.
Mr. Mayor, just to refresh my memory on this one, prior to the purchase, was there that, an amount that a person had to pay or have secured in case we have to come back and demolish it?
I don't know. Eric, do you know?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm almost sure that Mr. Macklin had paid like $10,000 for that property, hadn't he, Eric?
I don't think that much, but I don't know.
No, I think he did.
Did he? Yeah, maybe, Michelle, whoever could answer that, I just, I don't know.
This, Eric Trader, City Planner, as part of the bid by the Macklins to acquire that property from the city, they did bid $10,100. I'm not sure, I'll have to do some double checking, but I don't think that there was an actual closing yet, so therefore they have not paid the city that money and are asking to cancel the development agreement so that they would not be paying that money.
Okay. I was, I was thinking that we, within the way that we sell some of these houses now, I thought there were some protections in it for the city, just in case we have to come back later on to demolish it. So are we saying we're going to cancel the development agreement before it actually happens or happened? But I thought we had some protections for ourself. If we had to come back a little bit later on, and costs may change for the city to demolish that, those structures, but just...
I believe there's some protection wording written into each development agreement, but yeah, this would be canceling the development agreement essentially like it had never occurred to begin with.
Hasn't been executed, though, right?
The development agreement? They didn't pay, so it hasn't been executed fully, has it?
The development agreement was executed, they just have not closed and purchased the property.
But did they sign on a dotted line and we signed on a dotted line?
Yes.
Another thing, did we have any, did we have any other bidders?
I don't recall for sure, but I do not believe that there was.
I think this was an individual case. I, we had this scheduled at one time for demolition. Mr. Macklin came forward.
Yes.
Went through the process and is now backing out on that.
So what does it say in the development agreement regarding potential of the city having to demo this property in any bond or whatever? Or does it?
I don't have the development agreement in front of me, and I'm not too sure. I would have to look into that.
Let's take a step back, then. So if they had never wanted this property to begin with, what would the position of the city be?
I think it would be gone by end.
But we would have had to have torn it down anyway, right?
Correct.
So we're not in any worse position than we would have been.
I think the only thing that's happening is we've delayed the demolition of that project. We would not execute, we, council approved the development agreement.
Right.
And he is asking to get out of that contract and disapprove it, or get out, and that's what he's asking you to do. We have scheduled that for demolition, so it is scheduled to be torn down. I don't think that, I think it's a cost neutral. I don't believe there's any cost to the city in this at all.
I mean, Eric Trader, there would have been savings had they, had the city not had demolished it.
Correct.
But yeah, had he never entered a development agreement to begin with, we would have been tearing it down, so therefore there's no more increased cost than what we would have had anyway.
Mr. Mayor.
Demo costs have gone up.
Mr. Mayor, the...
Mr. Morrissey.
The, the reason for this is, is rather tragic because Mr. and Mrs. Macklin were going ahead with this and, and had all the best intentions go ahead with it, and then they had a medical tragedy within their company that has forced them to do this.
Right, right.
It's just an unfortunate set of circumstances that came up.
Right. Mr. Dillon.
Forrest Dillon, 1725 Huntington Road. We have a 657A housing purchase agreement. We drafted an ordinance, and it required a down payment. I read it, I was down in the room when you put it together, and I listened to the words. I was considering buying some of those properties, and there were other people also willing. They said you have to post a bond so that if you don't take it, you have to tear it down. I do sympathize with what happened to the gentleman, but there are people right here in the audience that have some of the similar things going on in their lives.
Okay.
Are you gonna let them out of everything? You gonna let them not pay their taxes? You know, I'm sorry, but that's what it requires. If he bought an insurance policy, it should have to pay off.
Thank you, sir.
Sir Money Escrow.
Do we know?
I would have to double check the agreement, but I, I think that is, that sounds correct, like fairly standard wording that we put in the agreements. But by can, if the agreement is canceled, nullifies that.
Right.
Do we have enough information at this point to move, to make a decision on this? I guess is my question.
I do. David?
No. Ron's staring me down. No questions?
I don't, I don't recall. It seems to me there was a, a statement that if they did back out, they would at least cover the costs of the city.
Well, that's what I'm trying to...
The city has had any costs here.
I'm trying to work with, you know, the recol, you know, people recall certain things or don't recall certain things. I'm wondering if we should wait a week until we can definitely say this is what it said and didn't say.
It would seem to be prudent to know exactly what it is.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table this item till we get some further information, and that, that information would be the actual correspondence on the development agreement with the questions that the council had in regards, in those regards.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second to...
A week.
Table this for one week to provide counsel supporting evidence from the development agreement. Eric, if you can make sure that each council member gets a copy of the development agreement with that portion highlighted as to what the terms are.
Absolutely.
That would be good.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welper.
I, I think they had to put up like $150 or something like that, that they would forfeit should they back out of the deal. That's, that's my recollection.
Well, there, there is a motion and a second to table, and we'll find that out, and it's a roll call.
Yeah.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same.
Aye.
Okay, the motion does carry, but one nay.
Wait, we, we had other items we voted on.
Now we need to vote on the other two.
Yeah, okay, so we, we tabled item...
Eight.
Eight, nine, and 10. There is a motion and a second on the ta, oh, no.
Six, seven.
Six and seven.
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
That's fine.
Six, okay, six and seven, it's this electronic. Six and seven, there is a motion and a second on the, on the floor. Are there questions regarding six or seven? Eight has been tabled? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call. Vote on six and seven, please.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Again, the motions carry, nine and 10.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number nine is adopting a resolution approving extension and purchase and sale agreement with Flowers Baking Company of Waterton LLC, excuse me, Waterloo LLC, to allow for completion of phase one and phase two environmental work, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute any necessary documents. And item number 10 is adopting a resolution supporting the application by Blackhawk Contracting and Development Company for the Iowa Workforce Housing Tax Incentives Program to construct 28 new housing units in Waterloo.
Second. Very good, thank you. Mr. Schmidt, counsel, do you have any questions regarding nine or 10?
Mr. Mayor, on number nine, I received a question regarding moving forward this and having to pay the utilities that could be up to $3,000 a month for this empty building. I believe Craig checked into it, and we can disconnect it from service as long as we don't store anything in it and have no occupancy, which could save substantially on utilities.
Okay, that really has nothing to do with the motion that's on the floor, but those are good comments, and I'm sure as we move forward, we're not gonna be anxious to be paying utilities in that building sitting empty, so we'll do everything we can to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Thank you, sir.
Further comments? It's a roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Already did, yes.
Mr. Mayor.
But I'll do it a second time for you.
Mr. Mayor, item number 11, please, Mr. Hart.
A move to approve change order number one, in the amount of $1,497 to Don Gardner Construction of Waterloo, Iowa, in conjunction with the Waterloo Public Library restroom renovation, and authorize mayor to execute said document.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding item number 11? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, counsel. That is the end of our regularly scheduled meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, if there's anybody in the audience who would like to address the counsel, now is the time to do so. Please approach the podium and give us your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Jim Chapman, 224 Birch. I know you're coming into the budget meetings here pretty soon. There was a couple articles that caught my eye in the paper. I got them out of order. The first one was, deer is gonna idle 565, that's gonna end up being 1,027. I talked to him today. And the other one that caught my eye was Friday's paper on the Courier, A7. Half of the households spend all their income. That is disturbing. You know, we got people right here in Waterloo that, you know, they come up to me all the time, and they say they can't, they can't take any more raises. They're on fixed incomes, and, you know, what are we gonna do? I, I agree with Mr. Morrissey. They ought to raise the minimum wage to $15 an hour, and they also ought to raise the social security to $15 an hour based on $40. Yeah, I don't think that's ever gonna happen, so. But something's gotta be done. We gotta hold the line. And also, three minutes means three minutes. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman.
Steve Murphy, 124 Terrace Drive. A couple things about...
A couple things about the budget. I really like the base level budget that was put together. And I wish we could start from here because it kind of shows that all-in rebate, backfill by the state, the whole shot. We're about $250,000 better this year than we... Or next year than we are this year. And it seems to me if we could start there and then move up... Plus, it's not really apparent of if the $435,000 increase, not total, the increase of $435,000 in the franchise fees is in here. So, I think if we could start at the base level and work up, we might be in a much stronger position. Because it's not just about the taxes and the levies. And let's kind of look at it from a revenue, the money that we all gave you last year and the money we're all going to be asked to give you this year. And that includes the franchise fee. That's getting to be a pretty good-sized number this year. Additionally, on the animal control. So, it looks like last year... And I'll try and work off net numbers. Round numbers were about $219,000 into it. And we had a pretty high-quality product. And I only know that because I heard you say it, Mayor, dozens of times, here in the chambers and in the paper. And now, next year, net, we're being asked for $337,000. Can we just keep the quality product that we had this year? Because it was a good product. You were in favor of it. I'd urge us to try to keep to the $219,000 high-quality product that we had. As we look at the budget, we're going to have all kinds of questions on light items. A lot of it's going to go back to what we spent last year. And I urge you... I know the other budget's been done. I urge you to start with the base level for all the taxpayers. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Hart.
Forrest Dilliboo, 1725 Huntington Road. I would have echoed everything that's been said here about the budget already. I do have some more to add to it, though. These departments can save money. I don't care what it is. I can point out a few things. You were issuing notices to landlords about mowing grass. You were sending a certified letter. When it was pointed out to you, Mayor, you took hold of that. You said, "Hey, we're going to quit sending it." We were sending people over to the post office to do it. You corrected that. We saved money in that department. Sandy Greco's department. When it was pointed out to her that there were streetlights out that had been out for a long period of time, someone said, "Hey, here's how you approach Mid-America." We got a check from them. It goes on and on. They can all do it. John Deere's had to work harder, not smarter. Everybody can do it. Dan has in forfeiture. He has a bunch of money. He's going to be picking up cars off the street soon. If we impounded those in our lots... We got a new building out here. We got an old building out here. We got properties that are fenced. If we impounded those cars, we would get the impound fee. We would get the daily rental fee, and we would get the scrap value when we scrapped the car. We could make money instead of just raising the taxes on those residential people in Waterloo. We've got TIF properties downtown that don't pay anything into the general fund. Not a penny. I approached state legislators the other day in Cedar Falls when they had a forum up there. They said, "Yeah, Forrest," and that's not all of it. Not only do you not get that, we have to backfill. We have to backfill the schools. They don't backfill the county. Cedar Falls is not going to raise their taxes. The county is dipping into funds to reduce or not have an increase. And I think that's what we got to do. We got to get smarter, and we can do it. We've got some of the best people in the world working for our city, and they can do it. But if they can just ask for more people and get it, if they can ask more money and get it, that's what they're going to do, just like the schools. Thank you.
Thanks, Forrest. Is there anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, motion.
What? Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrison.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment about historic preservation for our city.